Okay, Sam gave me the we're ready. So it is 6:04. So I will now call the meeting of the January 4th, 2022, City of Angels to meeting. And we'll call these rooms for number one.
Sheriff William?
Seven.
Vice Mayor Hendon?
Present.
Councilmember California?
Present.
Councilmember Montana?
Present.
Councilmember Toronto?
Present.
Staff is present.
Okay, thank you. Next, we move on to pleasures of the pledge of allegiance. Everybody please stand. And I'll leave. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we should stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice So next, we move on to number three, report on the closed session for items A and B. Direction was given to the staff. Next, we move on to item number four, approval of the agenda. We have a motion to approve the agenda.
Uh-huh. I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed, same sign. Next, we move on to number five, which is public comment. The public may address the council on any item of public interest not otherwise on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the city. No action may be taken. Matters to be addressed may refer to city staff or placed on the subsequent meeting agenda. Speakers are limited to five minutes per person. Any member of the public that would like to comment. Seeing none, hearing none, I will close public comment. And we will move on to item number six, which is consent agenda, items A, B, C, D, E, F, and G. If any staff, any public, or anybody would like to pull an item, please let me know at this moment. If not, I would look for a motion to approve A through G.
I'll make the motion.
I will second the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed, same sign. Next, we move on to item number seven, A, introduce wave first reading, hold public hearing on set one, 1822, for a second reading for ordinance to revise A, Chapter 17, dot 27. Central Commercial CC to be renamed Community Commercial BE, 17 dot 30. Suburban Commercial SC to be renamed Shopping Center Commercial C, to incorporate permitted and conditional use and design structures to update Chapter 17 dot 34, permitted and conditional uses, and 17 dot 09 definitions as needed for consistency with proposed changes. We'll go. Number one, receive staff report. She left.
Mr. Mayor, council members, that sounds a little bit more complicated than it really is. Basically, what we're doing is we're taking all of the conditional permitted uses that were in Chapter 17, 34, adding them to individual commercial zoning district chapters. So the list of permitted and conditional uses hasn't changed that much, but have changed In addition, we are making it comply with general plan 2020 in terms of things like lot coverage and all those standards that we had established when we adopted the general plan. Some of the changes that we've done, we have expanded what you can do under administrative conditional use permit. We were having a decent number of salons, if you will, that wanted to go into business. And they basically always required a conditional use permit, which required a public hearing. The primary reason for that had to do with odors that often emanate from a salon. We found that when we notified adjoining property owners, we frequently did not get any responses or concerns from neighboring landowners. So we have moved that to an administrative conditional use permit in the commercial district so that if we do not get any opposition, we do not have to go to a public hearing and we would be able to issue it in-house. That said, the major differences here are between community commercial and shopping center commercial is scale. In the community commercial district, things tend to be a little bit smaller in size, a little bit less outdoor storage is permitted, whereas when you get into the shopping center commercial district, you can apply to do large format retail, and you can apply to have additional outdoor storage. Two upcoming changes that we will also be bringing to you will be guidelines for outdoor sales and storage. Right now, we have about four different standards and four different sections of the code. I know that's starting to sound familiar to you, but we're trying to consolidate them into one, as well as to try to expedite street and food vendor permits, and even things like temporary buildings, which were requiring full-scale conditional use permits. And again, temporary buildings, we didn't want to go through a big old public hearing rigmarole for something that's just going to be temporary. The planning commission did consider this at a public hearing on December 9th and did recommend approval of the proposed changes. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have. And this is a public hearing, just wanted to make sure.
Yep, so.
Yeah.
I will, go ahead.
So I just got through this today. It's a lot, but I just had a clarifying question. On setback, I noticed on for the shopping center commercial district, the setbacks were front 10 feet and side 5 feet. Is that feet or is that the building? And is that, are we talking about like, no residential would be near that. Or maybe so better.
Yeah, residential is traditionally 20 feet front and rear, five on the sides. Commercial can actually range to zero foot setbacks. In fact, in our historic district, it is. Shopping center commercial, they're not as big as residential. And even though you have those setbacks, you do have to take into account right of ways and staying out of those. And especially, everything being along 4 and 49, a 10-foot setback sounds small, but once you take out the right-of-way distance and then setback from that, it's actually...
Because we do have residential still sprinkled in into some of, well, I don't know if it's in it as a community.
Residential in...
But I know that like when I lived on Main Street, I was in that heavy commercial and the setback was eased right up against the property law and still up against the residential. That's why I want a clarification on that.
Okay. I hope that answered you. Okay.
Any other council questions at the moment? At this moment, then, I will open up for the public hearing. At this moment, the public hearing is open. Any member of the public would like to comment? Okay. Seeing that, I will close the public hearing. Are you ready to motion? No, we're just setting the date. We're just setting the date. So at this moment, the public hearing is closed, and we will set the date for 1/18 Next, we move on to item B, provide counsel options for the water line replacement on Murphy's Road, just east of Main Street, Highway 49, the crosswalk at the high school. Rebecca Nealan is up.
Actually, I need to speak up on this end. In an abundance of caution, I need to refuse myself from this item. I think I do also.
Okay.
Momitos?
You guys can go in the back room over there.
Okay.
Sit on the recliners, watch some...
Making my notes with me.
Watch some TV.
Okay. Haven't been to the back room yet. This could be fun.
Okay.
Someone's sleeping back there.
We can start a little bit while we're about to open. I just want to say it's nice to see you in person.
I know.
It is so nice to see you in person. This will open eventually. I'll kind of, oh, there we go.
So I shared your staff report before we had the full story. So now I have the full story in the presentation. Amy and I were talking about how nice it was to be online because you got all this stuff to compare it before.
Yep, you just put...
Well, it is fantastic to see everybody. So, oh, no, I'm not. Thank you. So on November 2nd, Jan from Maxwell presented an item with a request for some approval from funding to cover a potential change order.
Yep.
The change order is related to 517 feet of water line that's in conflict with the north side of the road. So we received a quote from the contractor, specifically a subcontractor, of $343,000, where our engineer's estimate was $252,000, so substantially over the engineer's estimate. So our resident engineer went back to the contractor and said, look, these prices, I get it, but you need to do better than that, sharpen that pencil a little bit. So they came back with $300,000, which was still over the engineer's estimate at $47,000. So the direction at the last council meeting was to consider some local contractors to see if we can get a better price from a local person. So we did reach out to the two firms that are on the city's emergency repair pre-approved list. One of them was too busy to provide us with a quote, and the other one did provide us with a quote, which is the part that you're missing. So we got that quote, $217,000, which was fantastic because the engineer's estimate was 252. So that's fantastic. That's a great number. So I'm going to backtrack a little bit. The money that Jennifer Maxwell discussed with you in November to get approved on was $130,000 in RMRA road maintenance rehabilitation money. So that $130,000, that is federalized money. Oh, thank you so much.
That's going to update.
Oh, I thought that would happen, huh?
And it's just a good looking thing.
It's not on your phone?
Yeah, it dropped off.
There we go. All right. There we go. Okay. So here's the 517 feet that's in conflict. I didn't really understand it when I first heard about it. But the left side of the upper picture, that's Highway 49. So Highway 49, that gas station, it's going to run along the north side of the road up to the parking lot, to the pool, parking lot across from the high school. So that's the 517 feet that we have in conflict.
So from the gas station to the pool?
Yeah.
Okay.
And one of the things, the water line is in conflict in a couple of locations. It's a six-inch water line. It is in the capital improvement plan to upgrade that to an eight-inch water line. So the numbers that we were getting quotes for were to upgrade this whole segment of line. Okay, so then that's the money that we had approved, the top number, the 130 that was finalized, the lower number, the 190, that is out of our water sewer capital improvement plan, that's 100% local, and that's going to come into play here in a minute.
We, correct me if I'm wrong, we transferred that from...
The last season.
We transferred that from, what's that project?
The CEAC?
Yeah, we're working with it. That was from another project.
It was allocated sooner for another project.
Gardner Lane, that's where it came from. Okay, yeah. Sorry, I was just trying to step in the way.
Okay. And then the summary is here as we talk about 343. The original 300 was the new bid from the actual contractor, 217 from local, and then the difference between the estimates there. So here's the options that we have. The first option, if we go with the existing contractor, he was $300,000. We're going to need $25,000 in addition for the resident engineer to monitor that water line installation work. It wasn't part of the original contractor, and it changes their split of work a little bit, requires extra time from them. So that 300 becomes 325. We can use federal, state, or local money to pay for that. The available funding that was approved in November was 320, so that makes us only short about $5,000. And that can be accommodated within all the existing contracts. So that's basically a zero. But if we go to the local contractor, we got 217, so we need to add 25,000 for the resident engineer. And because that work was not part of the original contract, we can't use federal money to pay for a local contractor. And that's kind of the catch here. So we can only use local money to pay for the local contractor. Well, we had only approved $190,000 of local money back in November, so that's going to leave us short right now $52,000 for approving that local contractor, which isn't the end of the world. We can move another $52,000 from the water capital improvement program if you want to go with the local contractor. You'd have to find those funds and move them. We can do that. We can choose the prime contractor with his sub, with his higher quote, but those numbers, it's basically a zero. Even though we're paying more for the work, the money is like free-allocated. And then the other option is to do nothing. And if we do nothing, we believe that we don't touch the water line, and we eliminate the sidewalk on the north side of the road. So those are really your three options. I know. One thing to also think about, if we don't choose the prime's subcontractor, the prime will likely hit us with a right-of-way delay, which is a day, they'll have to put off finishing their work while they wait for our subcontractor to get in there and do their work.
How long is that?
15 days. So we'll have to give them 15 additional working days. So it's not really a monetary, it's just a working effort. It's a really tough decision.
So the original contractor is there now. We would be in the whole $5,000, roughly. If we go with the local contractor, we're roughly in the whole $50,000.
We'd have to move more of our own money.
And move more funds from sewer, water, the enterprise funds. And then the option three is to do nothing, but then we scratch the whole sidewalk on that, that whole side.
It's a really tough decision. I'm glad I'm running my seat, having to make this decision. I would have a really hard time making a recommendation on this one, to be honest. There's pros and cons to all of them.
So obviously, certainly, I would prefer to not have to pay so much and use the federal fund.
Right.
Put myself focus on that too. If it's in a number that's in conflict, right, but it also increases. If we have something else for...
That'd be another change order. Either, either, either one of them would be another change order, would be my guess, right?
Do you anticipate any more surprises? I don't have a super question.
No, but I mean, that's essentially, yeah. I mean, this project's in the middle of it all, frankly. Well, it has to be. I mean, you look at the nature of the street, it's an old road. You're going to hit things. That's how old roads go.
So for either the three of us sitting here, is scrapping the project an option?
No.
For me, scrapping the project's not an option. So we'll kick that one out, and now let's...
So I would say both contracts have additional potholing included to the tune of about $8,000. So they will go pothole all the laterals and the conflict points, so they'll discover those as they do this work.
Yeah. So anymore, does any staff or council members have any questions for a second?
No.
Okay, so I'm going to open up public comment and see if you have any public comment on this topic for a minute, and then we'll bring it back and we'll kind of come down with the decision. So at this moment, I will open up the public comment. If anybody's got anything for Rebecca, or for council, or anything at the moment? Come on up.
Well, having worked on this project with all of the right-of-entries and everything, I thank you for not scrapping the project. A lot of those landowners on the side where the sidewalk is coming is very much looking forward to that because of the safety issues that they deal with day in, day out. It's always nice to be able to use local contractors, but in a city of this size and all of the future projects you're looking down the road, $52,000 is a lot of money to pull out of one coffer to another and potentially jeopardize some other capital projects down the line. So when we first heard of this, we were leaning towards the existing contract because it's almost a wash. We're already using federal and state dollars on this project, so we know what they want and how they work. And this particular contract is doing a good job from the point of view of communication to the landowners that are adjacent to the project and keeping them in touch and working with them for their access points along the way. And also, bless their hearts, dealing with all of the supply chain issues, which has further pushed this project out because it was hopeful this would be done by the 1st of December, but all these little things add up. Now, like Carolyn brought up, a very good point, we're now digging on the demerit side of the road, and they're just old roads and old infrastructure, so there could very well be other, other kinds of things that come out of it. So if you don't spend the $52,000, you kind of have that in the back of your mind as some money to need to if something should happen with this project. So our recommendation from DAC was utilizing the existing contractor for this particular part of the project.
Thank you, Debbie. Any other public comment at the moment? Okay, I have a closed public comment from that one. And I will bring it back to council, and if anybody has any further questions, Rebecca?
No, I don't have any question. Well, I guess.
Spit it out.
Did we know this when we asked the local contractors to bid, that this could be, that we would be using local funds? And the reason I'm asking this is because I know that when you put together a bid, it does take a lot of time. So there's a part of me that I appreciate that they did that, obviously, but are you saying like we shouldn't be asking locals if we know we can't pay for it? Kind of, sort of, yeah. We're putting them in that position to do all that work. Right.
So, but yeah, but until you get the bid out, but until you get the bid out of the guy, I mean, until you get the bid out of the, out of the contract that you don't really know.
Which is true, but an engineer's estimate is going to kind of give you an idea of what it's all, right?
I don't think any of us are, you know, we're all pro-local.
Using local first.
Right.
Obviously, that's where we sit. So it's, this is a really difficult decision. The $52,000 that we'd have to come up with, I mean, was it just gonna, we're going to have to take it out of another budget, and that's going to be, so it's, so there's going to be like a loss of that funding that would go towards something else. That would, or was, might be allocated towards the wall. Okay. Which is where my comment was coming from of if, if it, it could be more than $52,000 that we're going to lose. If we hit something else and we need another team.
This project has proven to have like every turn, there's been something else.
Right.
And I just know, I mean, I have a driving teenager. He has been saying since school started, if his people didn't do it, they have for new drivers too, that like to see this get wrapped up sooner than when they're through as well. There's a lot of safety issues, not just with the sidewalk, but it's also just all these new drivers coming out of the parking lot, so.
So, all right, well, I'll make a motion. I mean, actually, let me do this first. We've already had to move money, money one time from the Gardner Lane to here. We're going to have to move money again, and I hate to move $52,000. $5,000 is easier for me to swallow than $52,000. I mean, you never know what you're going to hit. I thoroughly appreciate the local contractors, and when we had one come out and do it, that's amazing. And I'm happy to get that quote out of that gentleman or contractor, whoever it was. But for me, I make a motion, we go with the existing contractor for the $5,000 extra.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed, same sign. 3-0, with two, I'm still in... Yep, if you want to go grab them. 3-0 dash two.
Thank you for making...
Thank you, Rebecca.
A very tough call. We've been talking about this for a month.
And Rebecca just, no, you already standing there.
Yeah, I'm next. You maybe didn't need a council meeting if I wasn't here. All right.
Okay, so next we move on to, you guys are ready? Jump again.
No, it's good.
Next, we move on to item B, request for direction on Sonora Street repair work. Rebecca Nealan is up again.
So, I'm sorry, what? Oh, last thing, this is sinkhole.
Sinkhole.
Oh, I am sorry. I moved ahead. Sinkhole. Item C, I put a check mark, one too many. Update council Fairview slash Mark Twain intersection sinkhole and provide staff recommendations. Rebecca, you're up again.
So this is partially staff recommendations. I considered putting this on consent, but I wanted to take a moment just to celebrate what a great job staff have been doing and how they mobilized to fix this problem because this is the first time we fixed a sinkhole like that. It was impressive. Kind of with some of the chaos going on in the city, that we were able to do this within 24 hours was pretty spectacular. So I do have a recommendation at the end, but I'll walk through the timeline first. So here's the sinkhole. This opened up at Fairview and Mark Twain. We had a water line break here a year or so ago, and I think that's probably what started the problem. And then you go out to a sinkhole and you look at it and go, where did all that dirt go? And there's no obvious hole at the bottom. And so in past sinkholes, we've considered hiring a geotech and digging holes, and how do we fix this? And this time, we've, we've had two sinkholes, one each year for the last two years, and we said, the conclusion we always come to is fill them with slurry. So we just went ahead and filled it with slurry. What was so cool is Public Works found a sinkhole. I got the phone call that, hey Rebecca, we've got another sinkhole, and texting me a picture. And I said, well, if you don't see an obvious exit, we always fill them with slurry. Let's call some contractors and get some slurry. And within, what did I say?
Less than 20 seconds.
Within an hour, we had an emergency contractor who brought gravel to the sites. Public Works crews cleaned up the hole, kind of cleaned up the edges of it to make sure there wasn't any damage to the utility. Within two hours, that contractor had gravel and had ordered slurry. Public Works had the hole all cleaned out. And I, you know, I just, I was running out of the house. I called the police department real quick and I said, I had to leave a message, I didn't even talk to Scott. And I said, look, can you please, I know you have a changeable message board. If you have staff availability, can you throw one up on Fairview? Because it's a pretty steep hill to be coming down and get stuck and realize you can't get through. So just put something at the top, please, to let people know not to go down. And they have put together this pretty spectacular social media post. So by the time I got here, after, I think it took me about two hours, the post was up, the changeable message board was up, the contractor was here. It was amazing how quick everything got done. Let's see, then we, within about three hours, the slurry showed up, which is amazing. If anybody's trying to order concretes, you can't. So the fact that we had a contractor that could get concrete, concrete out here that fast was pretty spectacular. So they filled up the bottom half of the hole up to the utilities, just put some loose material on top to make it safe, put steel plates down for the night, let the bottom part cure. Because the hole was open, Public Works was looking at it, saying, we should really install a meter here and we should tap the line, we should cut the line right here. It doesn't really need to go any further. So they did a little bit of utility work just because the hole was open. And then the next day, they put the final lift of slurry, and it's done. So 24 hours to get a sinkhole all taken care of was spectacular. I will say, the things that we discussed, and why I'm here for staff recommendations, is every time these types of problems show up, we play hot potato with which department pays for it. So it might be a good idea since we have one of these... So it might be a good idea, since we have one of these every single year, is to have some reserve account to be able to deal with these things. We haven't received the invoice from the contractor, so I can't tell you exactly what it cost to do that work. But I'm thinking $30,000 is a pretty safe set aside, so I know that there isn't a ton of money to randomly set aside places. But when you guys are working on the budget, if you can think about some kind of an emergency repair set aside, that would be helpful so that we know pretty quick where to find, where the money needs to go. And I had one other recommendation, what was it?
Sorry, to clarify, you're saying $30,000, that would cover one sinkhole?
No, I think it would probably cover more.
Okay.
But that's a really conservative number, I thought. But it just would be a good idea just to have.
Right.
There. Oh, our on-call list of contractors was procured in 2019, so that is due to be re-procured. One of the on-call contractors that we have on our list basically doesn't do this type of work anymore. So it's a good idea to get that re-procured so that we have a better list of available contractors.
So when you have an on-call list established, do they have a rate sheet so you know who charges what?
Yeah.
And then does it determine how you call each contractor? Like, we know this one's great for doing slurry work, for example, is this price versus this guy's rate for this price? Or does that not determine how you call them out?
Well, this one we called kind of in order of who answered the phone.
Right.
But, but yeah, you would generally know the prices. Right now, with everything going on in the world and inflation, I'm sure that they would ask for rate adjustments at the time. So you couldn't really lock them in on things, but you would have an idea of who's generally where people are.
And equipment.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other council comments or questions?
Just great job.
Yeah, for me, I just, Public Works, Dave, Chris.
Yeah.
Rebecca, you, contractor, but I'm just, thank you. Everybody, within 24 hours, that's pretty amazing.
It was impressive. Are you okay with us re-procuring the emergency contact list?
Yeah, and that's another thing. So for me, can we give, I'd love to give direction to staff to re-procure that and look into the budget, trying to put, trying to put an emergency fund of $30,000 away, or some sort of an emergency fund for, we could probably even label it sinkholes. Because we do get them, we do get them all the time.
Where did the money come from for this one?
We haven't quite figured that out yet. That's part of the problem.
Your budget, Deb.
Does anybody else want direction to staff for?
No, that works for me.
Any public comment on Rebecca or anybody questions for staff? Okay, I will close public comment then, too. And that was just international. Thank you, Rebecca.
You're welcome.
Next, we will actually move on to item D, request for direction on Sonora Street repair work. Rebecca, you're up again.
Okay, this one is a little more complicated. Since I started coming to Angela's camp, one Public Works person or another has pointed out this issue at Sonora Street. And it's, I'll show you a photo in a second, but basically, Sonora comes into, it's a very steep downgrade, and it comes into Highway 49 at a very sharp skew angle. And I guess people cross, it's, 49 is on a curve, let me give you a photo. Here's the location, Sonora Streets. And we've got the intersection of Sonora Street and a very steep curve, and you can see from the photo about how far it is down from Highway 4 for reference. Okay, so here's the intersection, and you can see Highway 49 is on a curve. And it's sort of amazing for how slow traffic should be going through here. But we get people headed southbound on Highway 49 that cross over and hit the slope right next to that S for the stop car, which is amazing, they're coming into oncoming traffic and hitting that slope wall. And you can sort of see it, the photo on the right-hand side shows somebody standing on the stop. And the problem is really that slope between the S for stop and then the fog line for Highway 49. And it's kind of loose, packed, well, it's packed rock, not grouted in. And every time that gets hit, Caltrans hit it once with their blade, and we asked them to fix it, and they said, nope, we don't go past the fog line. That's you. But you did, but you should fix it, but they didn't. So right-of-way in through here is unknown, Caltrans only takes responsibility up to the fog line. So it's on us to get that fixed, and it's just slowly degrading.
That's not a two-way road, is it?
No, it's one-way.
Okay. Because I'm like, I've never been up there.
One thing that stops the pavement marking for stop is about eight feet wide, eight, nine feet. Sometimes it barely fits between the stripes, so that gives you a sense of how wide it is, it is not wide at all. And I believe, when we were looking at it, we're pretty sure the city constructed this block retaining wall that's on the one side, and that really limits how wide we can make that piece of road. So my initial thought, when I get this, this call that Sonora Street is getting worse, is like, look, we just need to close that road. It's a terrible intersection, it's terribly unsafe. Here's a picture of our Public Works crew driving down it, which kind of amazes me. This really gives you a sense of how steep that slope is. It's almost a vertical slope, and you've got a road on top, the road curves into the steep section, and there's nothing to protect you from going into the hill. It kind of blew my mind when I saw it. A little scary.
It is. It's by the seat of your pants.
I've gone down that road several times.
It's what we call a legacy road.
It's even better with a trailer.
I was amazed, we were standing out there, FedEx comes and delivers something on that road.
And they have garbage cans, people have their.
I bet.
Garbage cans picked up, and I don't even know where they pick them, but they end up out of the road, you pick up.
It's kind of incredible, actually. One thing is buyer won't take a truck into this neighborhood. Because the streets are just too narrow, too steep, can't get them around. And here's another blow-up of it. So now that I looked at the intersection, and then you gotta find a spot to park to look at the intersection, so you park up on the steep spot, and that kind of worries you, and then you look at the street to get up there. So Sonora is one way down, this street up, I'm gonna forget the name of the road. Thank you. Which I almost missed the first time because I was fairly confident it was a driveway and not a street. Very narrow. And that's, there's only one way in, one way out. And so for the about 30 residents that live up here, that's a concerning situation. Oh, there's a picture of Martine, which, if it wasn't for the stop car, it would definitely look like a driveway. So as I look at Sonora, and then I see the slope, and then I see the roads behind it, and then I see the access issues, the problem just kind of snowballed. So I had to kind of break it down to all the things that need to happen up here. The two that I've highlighted on the top, which of course you can't see, I apologize. And the first one is, and I've done these in order of realistic realism for us to resolve these issues. We're not going to fix all of the issues, obviously. So my top recommendation is to put 100 feet of metal beam guardrail, where you come down Sonora and you make that 92, almost 92 degree turn to go down the really steep parts. There's no protection at the end of that road. So I think 100 feet of guardrail, you can put in deep posts, and it'll require a Caltrans encroachment permit, which always complicates things a bit, but that one should be easily approvable, or as far as anything with Caltrans is approvable. So my top priority feasible is guardrail. Put 100 feet of guardrail up there and then have it run down that slope a little bit and enhance the safety of that. My next project, and this is the one that is a huge can of worms, I haven't wanted to open it up ever, but I keep getting called out to the intersection, so I'm gonna have to deal with it, is to do something to repair the place where Sonora Street comes into Highway 49. And that is going to be a heavy Caltrans involvement. Even though they don't take responsibility for anything beyond the fog line, they definitely care about you with an intersection coming into their facility. My concern is, once you touch their facility, it's a capital, it's a capital project for them, and they could need a project initiation document, geotechnical investigation survey, environmental documents, all of that stuff. So that's my concern with the intersection fix. One thing that would be helpful is to create a turnaround. Right where Sonora comes down, kind of at the top of that yellow line, there is a whitish spot that you, we could turn into some sort of a turnaround. So if somebody gets there and realizes they just can't go down Sonora, they have an opportunity to turn around before they have to go down the really steep parts. That would require a little bit of right-of-way. Then the next fix would be to widen Sonora Street, basically from our problem to that street, whose name I can't remember. Martina, thank you. That upper piece, Sonora Street, is actually, has potential to be widened. So that would really enhance access in that neighborhood, to be able to widen that street, get a little better two-way movement going on. Then the last project on my list is, oh, second to last, is then widen Martine Streets, Martina Streets, to make that look less like a driveway and more like something that two-way traffic can access. And then the last one is to develop an emergency access for this neighborhood, something that comes off the back and eventually goes over to Highway 4. And that is a huge project, but I will say, the COG is currently initiating a project for emergency evacuation routes throughout the region. So this is definitely something that can be added to that list, and a little bit of thought can go into where those connections would be. So from the turnaround to the emergency evacuation route, I don't see that happening anytime soon. The guardrail and fixing Sonora Street are potentially possible. So I've broken them down just a little bit more. So for guardrail, deep post installation, Caltrans encroachment permit, they're gonna have right-of-way issues. I'm guessing about $40,000. And I try to guess on the high side, but I think $40,000 would get guardrail at that location. Then the next one is going down to Sonora Street, the actual intersection, and there's so many variables here. Really, my request is, do you want me to spend time starting this conversation with Caltrans and finding out what they're gonna require? And it could be very little, they could say, it's all you, just get a permit if you're gonna be swinging things into the Caltrans right-of-way. Or it could be a huge project, which I've seen many times before. And that is that, so a lot of this huge can of worms, two projects from that appear that are being put forth for your consideration.
Council, you got any questions?
Where's the money coming from for this?
Yeah, so the guardrail, we do have a little bit in road funds every year. The guardrail can handle it. This year, our road funds could probably, I need to get together with the city accounts to figure out where the road account is. We haven't spent any road money this year, to my knowledge.
Do we get $30,000 a year?
68.
60, okay.
I know some of it goes to covering my contract, but my contract isn't quite 68.
Yeah.
So I don't know what the balance is on that account, I need to get that balanced, but $40,000, we ought to be able to get something. I feel like intuitively, there's probably $40,000 in the road account for this. Are we doing something to it, Tim, that I'm gonna?
Yeah. The guardrail, once we fix the road, because most of the road is not good.
No, no, it makes perfect sense. I think if we were doing anything with the road, obviously, we can't widen it towards 49, so we would set the guardrail between Sonora and 49, probably in a permanent location. I think if Caltrans was gonna require us to do, to widen the road, it would have to go into the hillside. We'd have a retaining wall, that retaining wall would have to get re-silled. There's a lot going on. Not to my knowledge, I'm sort of amazed, I was terrified that I'd fall off the road, but.
Is there an alternative to, instead of doing 100 feet, can we do, say, 30 feet, right at that?
We could, where if you were coming down Sonora, you would slide into it, we could shorten the guardrail up.
But I mean, just like as a fix until.
Yeah, we could look to shorten these, it doesn't need to go all the way.
You're identifying that the majority of the problems are in the bend with people hitting the wall on 49, not falling off of Sonora, or I just don't understand what the guardrail fix is gonna really provide. It seems like a.
I feel like we need to do something.
It's something, but it's not really.
People aren't gonna be able to hit that, once it's fixed, what people can keep putting ahead. And I don't know that people are hitting it, I haven't heard any stories, I can't imagine that people don't. So.
And I have, this is a concern, it's been a concern for a few years. Is there any liability for us that if we don't do anything at the moment? Have there been complaints? Is that, I mean, is it one person complaining, or what do we have?
I don't think anybody.
Or is it just a concern at the moment?
It's mostly me going up there and going, how is there not guardrail here? I feel like as an agency, we should have it there. I haven't investigated the liability.
So then, the minute we put a guardrail up, now we've recognized that it's our liability. But then not possibly put that on a predicament that we don't, right now, possibly have.
Correct, correct. And I can take this back and actually go look at the liability. I know other really small agencies that do put guardrail on these types of situations because they feel liable. Whether or not that's a real, a reality, I don't know. So we can investigate that and come back to you and let you know for sure.
And just, $40,000 isn't a whole lot of money, but it is, it's money at the moment.
Yeah. Where we have other roads.
Right, right now, we just, we just did $5,000 for the last one, $40,000 here, and it starts adding up pretty quick. And if, I mean, I'm all for if, if somebody's life is in danger and there's a sinkhole, I'm all for it. But at the moment, I don't know if there's a public safety here, it is a little sketchy, I guess you could say. It's been that way for multiple years. I just don't know if this is something we need to tackle at the moment, and that's my, that's my question at the moment.
Okay.
So is there any other council questions at the moment?
I agree.
Okay, and let me open up the public comment real quick. I will open it, here comes Deb.
So this has been a discussion for 20, 30, 40 years. And I often suggested a neighborhood meeting, of pulling the forces together and discussing what the, what the problems are from the neighborhood point of view. A lot of it, you're gonna hear about the speed and the screeching of brakes and that sort of thing. So, you know, if there is a public meeting, I think all of those things will be discussed in that. Because you also have another problem on the opposite, right across from Sonora Street, Park Avenue. And it's that whole intersection, so you fix one, it's gonna trigger on to Park. So, you know, maybe a step might be some sort of neighborhood meeting, and you might find some solutions from the neighborhood. And the piece of property you're talking about just sold. So it is possible, maybe with new ownership, that some kind of turnaround or something like that is an option. But it has been discussed in the past about closing the road, and while that makes sense, like Rebecca said, it really impacts Martina to where it's more of a safety issue because you would have people trying to do a two-way, which they do anyway.
Right.
But that neighborhood is pretty polite to each other with letting people come and go. But that was the latest suggestion years ago about a neighborhood meeting of sorts to get more input from the neighborhood about what some of their concerns are. Public Works has always seen this and always been a concern. And anyway, that's just something that's been discussed in the past.
Thank you, Debbie. Anybody else, Ms. Amy?
Just a quick question for Debbie. So is it that parcel that's right where the two roads come together that just recently sold? Okay. The reason I bring that up is because of Rebecca's third bullet there. I think you are looking at, at some point, that road's not gonna be passable.
Right.
And maybe your money is well-spent trying to secure an easement on those properties before they get developed to put a turnaround there. Otherwise, there will be only one way in and one way out. So just to toss that off.
Any other public comments from anybody at the moment? Okay, I will close it, and I will come back and say that, for me, I'm just kind of still on the, let's, let's see what our options are on this before we just start throwing some money at it, which I agree that something needs to be done, but maybe we do look into purchasing a piece of property, or we, and I never even thought about it until Debbie just brought it up, right across the road, we used to turn it into the Road to Sanchez, and stuff, that's cool. And also, there's the 49 bypass that's supposed to happen at some point, too, that would alleviate a ton of traffic, and that's gonna be coming up at some point for us, too. So there's a whole mess of stuff going on there. So that's my opinion. Anybody else throw something else out there, too?
Yeah, no, I agree, and I appreciate all the work that you've put into this, because I know that took some time, but I feel like we might be dumping the gun on something, and I hate to dump money into something that later. So, yeah, I'm gonna bring it to you all.
Could you, I mean, I guess my, my final thought would be, could you see if there is any major, or debt, too? If there's some major liability hanging out there, then that changes the whole thing for us, and we'd have to do something quickly. then that changes the whole thing for us, and we have to do something quickly. But at this moment, it's been this way for quite a while, I mean, it's, yeah, for my whole life.
I was going to say...
Nothing, I've, I've never... Yeah, knock on wood, right.
So I think...
How many people? About 30.
Yeah, there's quite a few homes up in there.
About 30 homes, and potentially two drivers, two or three drivers per month.
But that's not the only exit.
No, they consider...
Right.
But if we were to close it...
Close it.
That impact might be...
Right, and it is pretty tight to turn around. I mean, you'd be, you'd be pulling into people's driveways and turning around.
Like five points in.
Right. So, does that give direction to staff then at the moment, without a, does that give direction, I guess?
That does on the guardrail issue. On the, do we repair Sonora, which is in a deteriorating state? Can, my request is to start coordinating with Caltrans, just to find out how bad that's going to be.
I would love for you to have a conversation with Caltrans and see what they're going to require.
Definitely.
That's mine. Let's see if anybody else has a head nod.
Yeah, definitely.
On the other side of the bogging.
Yeah, exactly.
We'll stay out there, hopefully, and if they stop our fog going.
I know. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so item D, we gave direction on all that. Thank you Rebecca.
Thank you.
Okay. And then we will move on to item E, adoption of resolution 21-1, authorizing the city in limitation, teleconference, public meeting pursuant to Assembly Bill 361, allowing the city to continue a hybrid virtual meeting environment, mayor and city council.
So we should, on the agenda, we need to meet, planning has asked that we continue to meet workers, and then in speaking with legal staff, we're recommending this question is adopted in order for us to meet the requirements to meet our...
So we can still offer hybrid?
So we can still offer hybrid?
For us and for planning.
For us and for planning commission, just city, city-wide, then through ourselves, okay? Okay. Does staff have any questions, or council? Any public comment on this?
There's three at the time, if it's left.
It would probably be when this bill...
Every 30 days?
Yeah.
We're back to that again.
We're back to, yeah.
And that's indefinitely, or isn't it like March?
Unless the state came to that. I think they're going to come down because of the circumstances.
Right. Okay.
Same resolution, every 30 days?
Can we put this on consent moving forward?
I think we can.
We can.
Yeah, so, I guess I'd like to make the motion, and in that motion state that we move this to a consent agenda, item moving forward.
Give me two seconds, some public comment, and I'll close in here in a second. Okay, seeing and hearing no public comment, I'm closing public comment, bam, you're up.
Okay, so I would like to make the motion, and in that motion move, that we move this to the consent agenda as opposed to the regular agenda moving forward. Can I cover that?
I will...
I second that.
Okay, go for it, you got it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed, same sign? Five votes. Okay, next we move on to item number eight, council reports, and I will start, is Bill.
I don't have anything to report. Happy New Year, and I'm looking forward to the year ahead. If anything might go off four days, we're in for a good year.
Gertl.
I second that. We were very busy downtown, I want to say, all, maybe not the first week of December, but there was a lot of activity in downtown Angel's Camp this year, and I think that was really nice to see. So, yeah, I mean, Utica's open, minor round, and we had things going on, and it was, it was great to see just activity going on, so, that's it.
Nice to see you establishment, establishment open.
Yeah, for sure.
For sure.
Let's see, I had a lot going on. I had quite a few meetings after our last council meeting. I attended the, the IRWMA meeting, and they sent out the revised report for disadvantaged community members, and Angel's Camp had a very low response. We had 12 responses to water and nine to sewer, and on the water, the recommendations were better filtration of water, and water that tastes good, and updated infrastructure and lower rate. And then on sewer, it was more modern and efficient systems, and cited a sewer smell outside in downtown Angel's Camp. So those are, and if you want to see that survey, I'm happy to send it to you, but it breaks down every single water district and by, what were the responses and how many people. And then I went to a watershed advisory committee meeting on the 15th, and that was to finalize the recommendations to the board regarding multi-benefit applications for, what do you call it, grants. And so the Twain Heart Community Service District and the tribe received a grant for 2.5 million in a project, so that was kind of cool. Then I went to the Central Sierra Economic Development District, my first meeting on that one. And they, we tabled a lot, because we ended up getting a ton of information like 36 hours before the meeting, and it was a lot of information, so we tabled some things, and we're actually having an additional meeting on the economic development, that'll, okay? So it gave us a lot of time to read through all of that. But they're talking about becoming partners with EBA, which is an American Rescue Plan, it's the Good Jobs Challenge. So that would require another, like, committee to sit on that, which would maybe be outside of our group to fill that committee, and the application deadline for that is 26, so we have to, we have to make a decision on that. And then we talked about grants for the good jobs, and the forestry, it's the other one with forestry court, I think, so, Calfire Grant. So that's all of that. That was it.
That was a lot.
I know. It's a lot.
Nice work.
Good job.
All right. Yep.
So on the 7th, the 12th, now the 11th, Alvin and I attended the UWPA meeting. My notes are in my last year's planner, because I have a this year's planner, and it's out in my truck, so I'm hoping you have better notes. I cannot remember what we had.
There was, they did 15-year for Mr. Marks. Yeah.
And a 30-year...
And Frank has been there for 10, so they did a congratulations, and, oh, it was...
We have remat, that's all it took in.
Yep, we have remat, and Mr. Minkler was there, our lawyers were there, there was lots of people that, because remat has been going on for years, and trying to get back in this program, and what remat is, is, how do I explain this real quick? Basically, we get a dollar amount for the energy produced.
A locked-in dollar amount, yeah.
This remat then locks us into a higher dollar amount for 20 years.
20 years.
So it's, it's going to kick a lot of extra money in the coffers, is what it's going to do. And now both Murphy's and Utica are locked in, so it was a pretty amazing fee, took a lot of people to do it, so...
When did that go into effect?
December 1st.
December 1st. So all this water that's generating money.
Right, so December 1st, so that's a huge thing. It still impacts us on water years and different things, on how much we can produce and get, but it, it definitely raises the bar, and it gives us a solid, a known, a known variable now, for the next, depending on water years, but it gives us, yeah.
All of November, the water system was basically shut down for maintenance, it's always maintenance month of November, and they did a lot of work, the flume repairs, all with volunteers, and...
We got the men in orange, fat.
Yep.
This was a huge, it's a, it's a big labor-saving cost, for two weeks to have, I think there's two crews they run.
Yep.
So it's a big labor-saving cost for those guys. What else? Mr. Conrada, we voted him in as a citizen-at-large, and Larry will be our alternative, Larry Thompson, he's been on the board for many years, but he's now our alternative.
He was once the administrator for Angel's Camp.
Yeah, water. What else?
Well, other, outside of that meeting, I know that they had with these storms, just in the last few days, they had a lot of trees fall on the, they had a lot of repairs that were necessary, but we were, knock on wood, we were uncaused, no, no damage. Okay, so that's UWPA.
That's all.
Guys, nobody mentioned our Christmas party. We did have a Christmas party that we all attended, on whatever that date was, the 14th, 20th, 13th, oh, I'm in January, that's like. That was at the public reports, thank you to Gertl. And then myself, on Christmas Day every year, I serve, I delivered dinners for Murphy's native sons, and I delivered like 64 or 68 dinners this year. And I think all together with all deliveries and what they served in person was roughly 600, and so that's always very humbling, in the afternoon. And that was it.
That's all I got for UWPA. Happy New Years, everybody.
I forgot. I did go on a tour with Debbie, with Zach, and Tim Ossie, they took me around town and showed me all of what's happening around Angel's Camp that was fantastic, so thank you for